Two thousand and twenty-one to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougall?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to item two, which is announcements and committee reports. And two A is COVID-19 updates, so I have a few for you this evening. As of today, February eighth, 2020, Island Hospital has tested eleven thousand eight hundred eighty-three people. They've had two hundred and forty-eight people test positive, and they've admitted forty-two people to the hospital with zero deaths. They have administered two thousand two hundred and eight vaccines. Seventeen hundred and twenty-eight of those have received their first dose, and four hundred and eighty have received their second dose. Island Hospital has no COVID-19 vaccination appointments for the week of February eighth because they received zero doses from the state this week. So we have a supply chain issue. But the hospital will administer them as quickly as they can when they can get them. In Skagit County, as of yesterday, we've had three thousand nine hundred and eighty positive COVID cases in the county. We've had fifty-five deaths, and we've had two hundred and thirty-eight people hospitalized. As opposed to a month ago, we had three thousand two hundred and seventy-three positive cases, forty-three deaths, and two hundred and six people hospitalized. So between the first of January and Sunday, you can see we still, the disease is ongoing in our county. Uh, Skagit County says that in the ninety-two-two zip code, we currently today have three hundred and sixty-one positive cases of COVID. The total number of COVID-19 vaccinations administered in Skagit County by a registered vaccine provider, so that will include, that includes Island Hospital also, was fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty-six doses as of last Saturday at noon. Skagit Public Health, due to lack of supply and no first-dose appointments, are available this week of February eighth. Second-dose appointments will not be impacted, but, um, but please check back on Saturday, September thirteenth at nine AM for an update. So they do, are filling, anybody that was, had a second-dose appointment, they will fulfill those this week at Skagit County, if you made them with Skagit County. In Washington State, we've had three hundred and twenty-four thousand cases of COVID and four thousand five hundred and thirty-one deaths. Uh, to go forward from phase one to phase two, and we are in phase one, and we're in the north region, we must meet three of the four metrics, and we're only meeting two. And the four metrics are to trend in the case of rate of sixty-nine, um, well, we're, we're, we have a sixty-nine percent increasing trend, and we need to be going in the opposite direction. We also are trending on a sixty percent increasing ten, um, trend in hospital admissions. Our occupancy at ICU is fifty-eight percent. That's within, um, that is, that's an okay metric, and the positivity rate is nine percent, and that is also an okay metric. So two of the four metrics, um, to date. In the United States, we've had twenty-seven million cases. We've had four hundred and sixty-three thousand deaths. And worldwide, a hundred and six million confirmed cases of COVID-19, um, including in that number is that two-point-three-two million deaths, and that's reported by the World Health Organization. And that is my report this evening on COVID-19. Any questions or comments? Okay. We'll move on then to item two B, our Port City Liaison Committee Report. So whoever attended can fill us in. Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Thank you, Mayor Gear. Uh, yeah, uh, Councilmember Young and I attended the Port City Liaison Meeting on February second. Um, it was a, it was a short agenda. Uh, we just kind of talked about COVID and it's the ongoing impacts between the port and the city. Um, but the main focus was a really wonderful presentation by the port for the Marine Terminal Modernization Plan. Um, just kind of discussing different pro, kind of giving us a real kind of high-level overview of potential projects they would like to work on. Um, they've, they've worked with consultants figuring out what, um, industry would make sense for this location and, and utilizing their port property as efficiently as possible. Um, one of the interesting things that I, that, um, came out of it was there's a utilization rate, and they, and I don't quite understand how it's calculated, but pre-COVID, they were at about forty to forty-five percent utilization rate. Um, it dropped, um, during COVID to about thirty-five to thirty-seven percent, but the majority of jobs, um, uh, remained, um, in this area. So that's a really, really good thing. Um, but ideally, can, full use is considered sixty to sixty-five percent utilization. So they're looking for more opportunities in the future and, um, that would fit with our community and our expectations. Uh, beyond that, we just talked about the Depot Plaza bathrooms, restrooms had, uh, arrived, were going to arrive the next day, and I believe we are currently installing them. So that was our, kind of our brief summary.
Thank you. Any additions to that report? Okay. We'll move on now to item two C, our Public Safety Committee Report. Mr.?
Mayor Gear?
Yes?
Um, I'll probably need some, uh, help from fellow council members, um, make sure I got all my notes, but, uh, Met, Public Safety Met last week, last Tuesday, council members present, myself, Christine and Jeremy from the Fire Department, uh, some discussion, as, as the rest of council knows, we spend a lot of time talking about sprinklers. So there was a lot of discussion about some of the way forward and how we can look at staffing. Particularly, we want to look at, uh, what the response times, what level of service, um, that we can try to balance with budget realities versus, uh, staffing shortfalls. Uh, Interim Chief Gantz was there and talked a little bit about, uh, the way forward and his role in working with, uh, I think it's called American, uh, Leadership to make sure we're going in the positive direction with, uh, with the Fire Department, which, uh, I think, uh, I think we all feel pretty good with, uh, with Chief Gantz in there. Um, working that transition to a new chief, which, uh, the mayor will correct me if I'm wrong, I think March, end of March, April, April timeframe, I think we're looking. And then, uh, so, and then from the police side of the house, uh, two new hires, one lateral transfer, one, uh, from scratch, I guess, for lack of a better term, and I think they have really good candidates still working on the, uh, finding a third officer. And, and then, uh, the discussion about the social services piece, reluctant to call it a embedded social worker, but, uh, we all know, uh, that it came out of the law enforcement world, and, uh, I think we have a really good plan in the way forward, and I bet, uh, Ms. Cleveland McGrath is going to have some more info on that as it dovetails into the, the HASC, uh, piece as well, uh, because I think we're using, they're using the right resources that we have in Anacortes, working with our law enforcement. So I think that's all I have, unless, uh, Christine or Jeremy have anything else to add to public safety.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Miller. And our final committee report is our Housing Affordability Committee Services Committee. Anybody have a report?
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton?
Hi, thank you. Uh, we did, so this is a perfect segue from Public Safety to the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee Report. We met, um, Ms. Cleveland McGrath, Mr. Walters and I met with city staff from the Police Department, the Parks Department, the Planning Department, and also Dustin Johnson from the Anacortes Family Center to talk about how best to move forward with the funding that we've, we've found in the budget for social services. We talked about the successes that the Anacortes Family Center has had with our, with our population, especially regarding issues of homelessness, chemical dependency, and mental illness, and with an idea of building on the mutual trust and respect between all of our organizations that we're exploring the idea of a potential contract with the family center to do a pilot program wherein we would take some of that funding we set aside to help fund their community resources manager, um, because there already is a foundation there. So that's in the exploratory phases that we started to talk about, how we can fill more of the gaps in services. We also spoke about our social services matrix and our data collection project, which is, is starting up where we will figure out, we'll have a list of inventory of providers and services, where the gaps are and how we can best fill them. And we have community members that are stepping up to help us with that as well. We have some very interested, knowledgeable stakeholders that we will be, will be including in our discussions. And staff is also working on a presentation for council and the public. So we're really excited to, to be moving on this and look forward to engaging the community for their help, because doing it together is obviously going to be more successful than not. And I believe that's it.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any comments, additions? All right, then we'll move on to item three, which is public comment. Does there any member of the public that would like to speak this evening? And I see no attendees, so I will move on from that agenda item. Item four, our consent agenda. Uh, items A through C are minutes approval claims and interlocal, uh, for the Bartholomew, Bartholomew Road Fiber Extension, number twenty-one dash zero-two-seven.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Hearing no, uh, comments, I've moved to approve Consent Agenda Items A through D. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. McDougall. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item five under other business. And the first item this evening is item five A, which is open for public comment. And this is a presentation on Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Rate Study. This is a discussion item this evening. And Mr. Lunsford, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Joining me tonight are Victoria Wong and Bob Voges with Parks Department. Greetings to you all. So we've been working on the impact fee rate study that you have before you and some of the information, so I'm going to share my screen and pull up a PowerPoint. Wish me luck here.
Hey, good luck.
I am sharing.
Right, you see it. We're on the last.
Awesome, there you go. Y'all with me?
Yep.
Okay, here we go. So, um, our parks, uh, and recreation impact fees were last updated in nineteen ninety-eight. Like a fine wine, they've aged very well, and we're ready to move on. So we, uh, hired Burke Consulting to develop a new rate study, which you have before you with, which was done in twenty-twenty. And the new fees will be based on growth projections and include residential and commercial for the first-time development for the parks impact. So currently, uh, the nineteen ninety-eight impact fee is on residential, and it's six hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh, the proposed impact fee for single-family is thirteen hundred and sixty-two forty-seven, and multifamily is nine eighty-one sixty-three. And you can see that, uh, we have this handy table for you, so you can see other communities nearby, what they charge. So with, if there are any questions on those, I will move forward. Okay? So, um, what Burke did for us is they looked at our data and our information, and they combined, compiled for our residential reg, uh, fee schedule, thirteen hundred and sixty-two forty-seven, as I said, and nine hundred and eighty-one sixty-three for our multifamily. Now, I know when we talked to the council subcommittee on planning, there were some questions about how we wanted to do multifamily and low-income and things like that. So I think that if, uh, maybe Ms. Moulton, Mr. Walters, Ms. Cleveland McGrath can help work, help us work through how they wanted to address that as a committee, not just for us, and maybe all of our impact fees. So I think that that's where we left that with that committee. Um, moving on to the commercial rate schedule, this would be new for us, and you can see that those fees would be for new construction on retail, industrial, services, and governmental. And that would help us address our impact fee needs, which is coming in the next slide. And so you can see as I look at this one, um, where those are going to go. So as you can see, uh, Washington Park, restrooms and infrastructure there, uh, Pocket Park construction potentially down the south end of town, but similar to what we did with Picket Pocket Park, we have to identify a spot and work on it. Heart Lake improvements, those would be following the Heart Lake Master Plan, it was approved in two thousand and ten. Cap Sanen improvements would be a collaboration with the Rotary Club. Storich Park lighting and field improvements would be moving to really reinvigorate that whole, uh, main soccer field and update it. Um, it hasn't been renovated since nineteen seventy-three when it was built, and we could really use some help there to make it drain better and be a better year-round turf field and bring in lighting for the whole area. That would be a lot tighter than it is now. You can now see it from, I think you can see Storich Park from Whistler when it's all turned on. Um, so we'd like to down, you know, downgrade those a little bit and make them LED and much more fuel-efficient. Um, pedestrian bike connections, those would be improving our trailhead for connectivity throughout town. Um, upgrades of Ace of Hearts restroom there, we have planned for restroom but don't have one. The West Side Park would be a building, a kind of a neighborhood park at West Six in Minnesota. And then Ship Wetland Interpretive Trail, that would be just helping us connect to the state ferry terminal. All right? So those are the projects that we're looking at, and if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them. We're not looking for approval of this tonight. We want your questions and feedback. Uh, we want to hear from the public if they have any questions, so we can take these to our consultant and bring this back to you at a future date, hopefully, uh, end of the month, because our impact fees are in front right now of the Department of Commerce for their, uh, public comment period, and that ends, I believe, on the fifteenth or sixteenth of this month. And so, uh, we have to wait till that deadline before we can even bring it back to you for consideration for approval. You also have, I think, a, uh, a, um, ordinance in front of you that I drafted for this as well. So if there's any questions, we're happy to take them, and I'll stop talking, unless anyone here has any more comments to make. Nope? Okay. Council or mayor, any questions, we're happy to chat.
All right. Council, what are you thinking?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
Um, you know, John, I, your presentations are getting better with each one. I really do appreciate how you weave in, um, superb knowledge, a great presentation, and a little bit of humor. I think that's maybe a sad job for you. Um, but really, what I wanted, would like for you to elaborate just a little bit more on is that I agree that the fees really do need an update, um, since we've not done anything since nineteen ninety-eight. I totally agree with that. Um, and given that, um, our development is moving forward, but we have limited resources, meaning, you know, I think, um, uh, Ms. Cleveland McGrath was pointing out that inventory with real estate is just so limited in, in build-out, is this sustainable? Meaning, I mean, I know we have other methods of getting resources to maintain the parks, to maintain the things that we're attempting to do. Tell me how we can do that in addition to this? Am I making?
I think that, sure, that's a great question. So when we look at, um, things that we do in the parks, you know, we've been able to do some things that have helped us in the long run. So we have put down, through the generous, generous donations from the, uh, Daniels Family Foundation, we turfed two fields down at Volunteer Park that were once grass that are now artificial turf. So together with light, they allow for people to play year-round, and they've really reduced our maintenance. So instead of mowing them and dragging them and making them ready for play, they're ready for play. We do have to do regular maintenance on them to, to keep them going, but nowhere near the daily maintenance that we had to do during season. So that's a big help for us. The improvements in some of our mowers, making them a little bit larger and able to mow more, have really allowed us to get things done. So, um, you will see that we've, we're, we try to be as efficient as we can. We get a lot of help from the community as well. Um, so we will, we'll try to build, what we're trying to do right now is improve some things that allow us to serve more people. So the idea of our improvements at Washington Park, where we talked about, I'll forward to that slide, um, the Washington Park improvements and restroom, so that's the idea is, um, adding restrooms to the playground area and the, and the shelter area, so that folks could come who are using it for day use, they come with a child or an older citizen, could get to those restrooms, where currently we now have porta-potty. So the idea there is improving our infrastructure without building more or building out.
Just, just, you know, you've answered my, the base of my question. I guess what I was really trying to point to was, was this amount enough in that to, given that Anacortes is a desirable location, given that so many, you know, some of our parks and facilities can be loved to death, or loved so much by so many people, my real question is, is this enough? And do we have other methodologies of continuing to keep the upkeep? I know you guys are frugal. You guys do a brilliant job of utilizing resources, both human resources, networked resources. I know you do that well. I was just really trying to question if this was enough, and then what are the additional revenues that you can depend on to keep up the standard of quality that, you know, we've come to enjoy? That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your clarification, Mr. Young. So the way that our fees are determined are by the formulas used based on the growth and the percentage of growth that's going to affect the cost. So they look at it on this screen, and they see, you know, what is the cost and what a percentage of that is related to growth, and they come up with the amount, and then they use that amount in their formula, Burke, by they, I mean, Burke Consulting, to come up with the number. So they look at our project costs, percentage related to growth, and that's how they come up with the roughly thirteen hundred number. Um, so that's how that's derived. Um, we could try to build more things, but just, you know, honestly, that's what we're looking at in the next six years to ten years. And so we will also underscore those funds with grants through the state, um, through generous donations from the people here. Um, we're, you know, look at, we collaborate where we can with our partners at Samish and things of that nature. So just anything we can to partner and build for grants would be a nice balance here to help us with our impact fee funds. To kind of maximize them if you can.
No, you've answered my question. I just really wanted that to just sort of come out for the public that may be watching as well. You know, you do, you guys do a tremendous job with limited resources, and you, and you maximize the opportunity of use of those dollars, but I just wanted you to elaborate that for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes. Go ahead.
Um, I think from my perspective, there's a, uh, tension here between, uh, wanting to ensure that development pays for itself, um, including for things that are indirect costs like park facilities. People want park facilities. If you put in a subdivision, there's got to be either increased numbers of park facilities elsewhere or a park within the subdivision. And the same if you put in a five-story building or some other kind of multifamily. Um, but the other, the flip side of that is that we want to reduce the cost of building, especially multifamily, uh, because that, those types of structures may be, assumedly will be, uh, cheaper to get, for families and, um, individuals to get into who are looking for housing. So, um, what I had suggested was not necessarily a change to the proposal, uh, for parks impact fees, but was that we start looking at ways to, uh, cross the board, across all our impact fees, lower the costs for, um, housing that is most likely to be more affordable in, in terms of what new housing will be built, which would be those smaller units that we have in our code as, uh, bonus provisions for extra height. If someone's building a six-hundred-square-foot unit, they're unlikely to put a family of four in it. And if you're not putting in a family of four, then you're having a less, lesser impact on the streets, you're having a lesser impact on the parks, you're having a lesser impact on, uh, our other, our other services. So I, I think that it would be worthy of our analysis to see if we could lower the impact fees for especially smaller units, maybe not necessarily lining it up with that six-hundred-square-foot threshold, but if you're building a smaller multifamily unit, you should have a smaller impact fee. Uh, and it should be something even less than the smaller, uh, fee that's listed, uh, in this parks proposal for, um, multifamily. Uh, because if it's a single-person multifamily, uh, unit, it's going to have an even further reduced, uh, cost. We just, we've got to be cognizant of these costs, um, not just the impact fees, but also the connection fees. And so I think we really need, I, I'm fine with this proposal. I think that, um, it's great that there are these improvements. Uh, it's, I also especially like that these improvements have, um, in the Burke analysis here, a percentage of the project that is related to growth, because that's the only thing that we're allowed to spend impact fee dollars on. We can't, we can't build a park to, to serve an existing deficiency. We need to build a park to serve new growth if we're spending impact fees on it. So I like to see that feature, uh, in this analysis. So I'm okay with moving forward with, with this, and I think that, as, um, one of the slides showed, it's, it's sort of in line with other, what other jurisdictions charge for parks impact fees, plus we haven't been charging very much, uh, for quite some time, which is really the only negative. It's the past year, uh, that we missed the opportunity to collect the appropriate amounts of revenues from the development that has already gone in and offset those impacts that that development has caused. But we must circle back around to look at how we can lower all the impact fees and the connection fees across the board, uh, for those types of development that most need it, um, not the McMansions, but the multifamily, and especially the small multifamily. So I, I want, I want to help keep that at the top of our mind after we get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Additional comments? Yes, Mr. McDougall?
I could not agree more with Mr. Walters. I would very much like to see us across the board, working with impact fees to reduce the, the financial impact to constructing multifamily and, and smaller units. Right now, the way the impact fee structure is built, it basically, it penalizes any, any development that looks to be, um, smaller, more affordable, potentially greener, and it rewards, uh, the large development in McMansions. So that, that said, I don't know if this is the, the time or the forum to work on the, the exacts, exact numbers of those fees, but I would like to see, uh, that shifted to the burden being less so, certainly on the multifamily. And I did have a couple of questions on the Burke survey information.
Go ahead.
Um, on, on exhibit five, it, it references employee population of about eighty-eight-hundred or eighty-eight fifty-eight. Is that considered to be employees working in Anacortes but living outside of Anacortes? Or is that like, is that total employees kind of working in Anacortes, could be living in Anacortes as well?
Is Mr. McDougall that regard to the, to the commercial rate schedule for parks that, that was regarding?
Uh, it was earl, earlier in the report, where it just described like number of workers and how workers also have an impact on parks, although I did have a question on the commercial rates as well, yes.
So I think that is regarding people that come here to work, and then the idea of how then you would accommodate them during their lunch or other times that they were here, uh, as part of that work, and so that's, that's what that's looking at, I believe. But we can, we can get that in, information from Burke and get that back to you.
Okay, great, great. And then another piece was, yeah, the, the commercial rates, the, so in the latter part of the, uh, the Burke study, they, they basically presented some, some figures, some math in, say, eleven, uh, exhibit eleven and fifteen, where it's the, it's the residential rates, and those add up to, you know, one-point-seven million, which is the, uh, the ask. However, there's these commercial rate, um, tables within the Burke study that, and it's exhibits twelve and sixteen, for your reference, where they show, like, I did some quick kind of napkin math, and it looks like they show five hundred thousand. And I was wondering, is that just to show an example or, or what that was, that commercial rate?
I can get that clarification from him and ask him. So just for your information, so we, we plan tonight to gather information from you, and then Burke can come on a second night and answer those kinds of questions for you, just so that we can have the discussion and give you that feedback from them. So they're planning to attend. We just thought it'd be useful for us to get the questions for them, feed them to them, and then they We just thought it'd be useful for us to get the questions for them, feed them to them, and then they can come prepared to talk to you in that regard.
Okay, yeah, that, that sounds good.
So thank you for that.
Additional questions from Mr. Lunsford?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
So along that line, since it's really about making sure we get, get what we pay for, I guess, out of, out of Burke, um, and, and what Mr. Walter brought up about square footage, i- if we, I, I'm not suggesting at all we would approve this tonight, uh, but if we approved it, it would go six sixteen to three sixty-two approximately for a single uh, um, single-family home. Is that, is that correct?
Y- yes, it would go from six sixteen to uh thirteen hundred sixty-two forty-seven.
So, so there is no variable or there are, there, there are no square footage variables and is that, I, I mean, I would think that Burke could probably do some sort of calculation like that, that, that seems like a question we, we could ask them.
Yeah, square footage variable?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. And again, I don't know what the number it is. Maybe it's uh, or, or a cottage housing variable or, uh, or a square footage variable, something um, s- something else. So if they can't do it or, or have other cities done that kind of, I, I can't imagine that other cities mayor may not have done that. But overall, I, I think it's reasonable. And again, I think to remind the uh, public, um, that there are a lot of restrictions to how we use this money, basically new things, but I do appreciate the, the fact that you put in uh a number of projects that don't or try to reduce maintenance costs over, because this, this money is typically not u- is not used for maintenance of our pretty expansive uh system of parks. Uh, but anything you can do when you, you build and improve upon our parks that are low maintenance, uh, low, lower costs like drainage, uh LED lighting, those kind of things. I'm happy to see that in the, in this briefing. So thanks.
Mayor Gear? Yes, Ms. Walton?
To Mr. Miller's point, if Burke were or is able to do a square footage variable calculation, maybe that could inform our conversation regarding the rest of our impact fees and connection fees if we're looking to make them smaller in order to encourage multifamily and smaller unit development.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters?
Yeah, we, we have pushed on our consultants before for impact fees um, to ask them to tell us how we can use square footage or house value or something like that uh to adjust the fee, because I think we would all like to do that. And they've said, no, can't do that. Um, I think Burke might be the consultant that could finally explain to us how maybe we could do that, because there is at least one city, uh Olympia, if I recall correctly, that in their parks' impact fees did um precisely what I described earlier, which was simply that they asserted that if there is a smaller unit um in their downtown, that they believe that it's going to have less of an impact on parks, thus deserving of less of an impact fee. Like they, they made that connection. There's no direct connection between square footage and impact, but there's a direct connection between number of people and impact. So if you can connect the square footage to the number of people, um, then you can have a reduced fee that way. And um, I'm not suggesting that this is only a parks thing. I think it's more of a, a impact fee across the board. Uh, but if Burke, who is a different consultant than we've hired for all of our other impact fees, can explain to us how we could do something like that, I think maybe that could um provide an entree into making this change across the board. So John, I suggest that you ask Burke to come prepared on that point.
Certainly.
Okay, other comments or questions from Mr. Lunsford?
Um, Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, uh, John, you can probably answer this pretty easily for me. Um, what did we, do we currently have a reduced rate or fee for multifamily?
You know, Ms. Mul- uh, Ms. Cleland McGrath, I think that we just charge one fee. And I think that, and then you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but can you choose to waive impact fees on a certain development if you wanted to? Not apply them?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Uh, there's provision in the impact fees to uh do a, uh, for the development to do a project in lieu of collecting the impact fees. Um, but we shouldn't be waiving them individually. We have provisions for reduced rates for low income.
Right. So we, and that would be the only thing that I can think of would be a council discussion at that time, but I don't, I think that right now we just charge six hundred and sixteen. I think that perhaps um, uh, the development uh out by the, the state ferry. What's it called, Victoria?
Um, it's uh, it's like three roads that we've charged higher tax, uh, higher impact fees on simply because they, they're on that particular street.
Right, yeah. So I'll just, I can't recall the name of the development. It was the Gilbane Development. There you go. So that one, I think that we, uh, they, they did provide parks and they provided, I think, a double impact fee out there for their homes back in whatever time that that was done. So um, that was a little bit different development, um, but that's how that, that's how that went down. So good job.
Okay. More discussion, more questions. Okay, John, we'll look forward to the Burks, come, the Burke study folks coming back with you and we'll get all the questions answered and see what we can do. Thank you very much to John and T. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item five B, also open for probably and it's Washington Park fee rate update.
Mayor Gear, council members, good to see you again. So here we are with this one. So this one's gonna be led by Bob, as soon as I can get him the uh screen to share. So, uh, give me a, give me a little minute here. See if I loaded it. There it is. Excellent. Bob, it's all you. Oh, I should say before, I'm sorry, I forgot to, it's gonna do a segue for Bob. So these are gonna be considered for you tonight. Um, they would be added to our unified fee schedule. So this is something that we're looking at to share with you that would ultimately go on the unified fee schedule, though these rates currently are not on there. So that's how you would uh approve them. We're not looking to approve anything tonight. It's more for your discussion and for the public information. Mr. Voggs?
Thank you, John. And uh, good evening, Mayor, council members, and anybody watching at home. Uh, so we wanted to talk a little bit about our Washington Park uh fees for uh the variety of services that we do provide at Washington Park. And uh, wanted to just start with kind of a quick, broad brush stroke, looking at revenue comparisons, the kind of money that we do uh bring in out there. If you look at uh, and this is, this is just the boating and the camping dollars. Um, you look at two thousand nineteen, um, it was a good year for camping. Pre-COVID, it was a tough year for boating because we had a broken boat launch uh throughout most of uh two thousand nineteen. Uh, in two thousand twenty, we uh, we fixed our boat launch and uh brought a lot more people out and uh, we had a uh, a little bit of a hiccup with our campground in that we were closed, uh, certainly for May and June, uh, which do include at least uh one US and one big Canadian holiday uh for camping weekends. Um, and still, uh, still did pretty well. So um, we, we do a decent job of covering our maintenance and operations costs out of the park as an example. So two thousand nineteen, you're looking at there, the total revenue's about two hundred and seventy-three thousand. Our expenses were about three hundred and fifteen. Uh, you throw in the showers and the firewood and the overnight parking and we, we get a little closer, not, not all the way there. Uh, we reduced our expenses in uh twenty twenty down to um two hundred and seventy-four thousand or almost two seventy-five. Uh, brought in about two hundred and fifty-four in these two totals. And again, you throw in the others and uh, we do, we do pretty well and almost, uh, almost breaking even out there at Washington Park. Next slide, please, John. Um, one of the things I do want to mention is, is that we, excuse me, we, we have been increasing our fees over the years on an annual basis. Uh, this isn't the first time we've, we've gone for a fee increase. Um, we, uh, we've had a, a complicated Robinsonian uh formula that involved the Consumer Price Index and, and some, uh, some other factors. And so sometimes the, the equation might be, okay, this is gonna go up by nineteen cents and, you know, firewood's gonna go up by a dollar six and whatever. And so we wouldn't always increase until there was a round dollar figure to, to go up to. Uh, what we're looking at, at the proposed rate increase for this time around, uh, if you totaled up the orange column and the green column, uh, it's about a ten percent overall increase in fees. Um, one of the things we discussed with the Council Finance Committee was the kind of the weird uh amounts, the thirty-ones and the twenty-threes and the elevens. Uh, ninety percent of the uh way that we collect money at the park really is plastic and then also our online registration. So there's not a lot of cash uh that comes in at the park. Um, we don't get too many complaints. As you can see, currently, we don't have too many round numbers, five, tens, twenties, that sort of thing. Also, the, the different uh denominations really help our finance department uh when we run the uh revenue reports, um, differentiate very specifically on where that money is coming from. So the some of those numbers are, are based upon that. Next, please. Uh, so we took a look around, um, Deception Pass, you know, the state park fees are, are kind of uniform throughout the state. Howard Miller Steelhead Park is a beautiful county facility upriver uh in Rockport. Uh, they do have a boat launch there. Of course, it's a little different launching a boat in the, in a river than it is in the, in the uh Puget Sound. Um, but that gives you a sense of kind of where we, we currently are, how we match up uh with those facilities. The, uh, the boat trailer column is basically what, what is charged per day to park your, a vehicle and a boat trailer. Then you can also, at Washington Park, you can leave the trailer. Um, you know, sometimes people will launch the boat, leave the trailer and other members of the family will, you know, drive the truck onto the ferry to go out to wherever they're staying. Um, so that's what the, the boat trailer means. I think, I'm sorry, if you could go, go back. I forgot how quickly this was. Uh, but if you look at the rates, even with our increases, um, we are, we are still uh a pretty reasonable place to, uh, to camp. Um, I would say that most of our feedback, our people are always impressed with uh just how reasonable our rates are. Um, over the last few years, we have certainly upgraded our boat launch. Uh, we upgraded our water and power service to our sea loop uh last year. Uh, as we speak, there are open trenches in A Loop where we were doing the same thing. Um, you know, we've been able to introduce some fifty amp service to our campsites. When Washington Park first went in, there weren't a lot of trailers that had two big screen TVs, hair dryers, uh microwave ovens and uh everything else that requires power. So there's, there's a big demand on power at some of the sites. Um, we have managed to uh fight off the temptation for Wi-Fi. We still believe that uh we can provide an oasis in the world where people can get away from that. Uh, there are also plenty of places in town where you can go and find the Wi-Fi. But that's uh, if that's sort of a general backdrop to uh what we're pursuing here.
Victoria, anything you want to add?
Oh.
Okay. Council, Mayor, any questions for us?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters?
Um, I think we mentioned this before, but did you look at um Fidagel Bay Resort rates?
We did not look at Fidagel Bay Resort rates. Uh, they have some uh restrictions there in terms of, um, you know, what can, what can camp there, how long they can camp there. There's no tent camping there. We typically, we don't have a lot of cross-pollination with Fidagel Bay Resort or like Pioneer Trails. Um, we don't, we don't see a lot of folks going from one of those spots to, and it seems like at Fidagel Bay Resort, and Brian, you may know this a lot better than I do, but a lot of the guests are very long-term there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that's true for the spots along the water. It just seemed like it was more similar to Washington Park. Um, it seems to me that the, uh, if you go forward a slide, we will have, we will have higher rates than these other locations, or at least higher rates than Howard Miller. Um, because what we're showing here is Washington Park's current rates rather than their proposed rates. So the utility camping rate will be thirty-one instead of twenty-seven, so they, Howard Miller, lower than Deception Pass. I was just hoping to see a few more comparisons.
Okay, yeah, we, what we, we just, you know, we chose the most popular public facilities in the region.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is totally off the cuff, but I pulled up some of the state parks, you know, using the Washington State Park um reservation system. And this would be peak times, but we know when we go with our trailer, this last year, it was typically about, with, with hookups that would be comparable to Washington Park, about forty-five dollars a night and then an eight-dollar service fee to make that reservation online. Um, so to me, this seems quite reasonable. Um, because I think state parks are a little bit more comparable to our local Washington Park than um, some of the privately owned RV parks.
Mayor Gear?
Yeah, that, that's, that's, I'm just gonna respond to Christine, the, the uh, it didn't include the, the, the state's reservation, you know, fee. Uh, we don't charge one of those, so that, that does make a big difference at, at the end when you do get your, your final invoice per night.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
Um, yeah, I'm in agreement with uh Ms. Cleland McGrath. I, I do think that the fees are reasonable. I think that Washington Park is well-loved. I mean, well-loved and even growing even more so. My concern would be in, um, just making sure that our fee schedule covers future ideas for what would enhance the stay at Washington Park. I, I really do think we're comparable to any of the other places I've researched as well. And so I'm very supportive of it. I really am. You know, I just want to make sure that we, in this rate increase, that we are asking enough. And if you say yes, I'm happy.
Well, I'll say yes, just to make you happy. Um, you know, they do, like, the, the state will, you know, sometimes they'll have, they might have a, a cable television hookup, you know, at the site. We, we don't have that. Some spots will have an actual uh independent sewer hookup at the site. You know, we don't have that. We still have a dump station um that you can use and, and is, is available for folks to use who don't camp. That wa- you know, a lot of local residents will use our dump station when they return from camping in other places. So, you know, that's a service that's just provided at Washington Park. Um, so, you know, in terms of, of expanding to a lot of those kind of high-end, I would call them camping services, we haven't, you know, our customers and our visitors have, have really enjoyed the sort of uh, you know, we, we joke about it being Deception Pass Junior, but that, that, that sort of more mom and pop type camping experience with a little less of uh, of all the modernization. So we're, we're trying to get better without, you know, losing that small-town charm that we've always maintained at Washington Park.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
So, yeah, I, I think uh all, all the numbers are reasonable, but I, I think to help answer, I'll, I'll pick a, a simpler number like boat trailer parking. And the reality is, a, a lot of folks either visiting or even locals don't necessarily know what's know what's a public park and, or a public launch and a private launch. But I have it on good authority that it's very close to a nearby private launch as far as like boat trailer parking within fifty cents. So I, I think, I think the numbers are pretty reasonable all, all the way across the board. But, but picking something simple like a boat, boat trailer parking is, is, is a good comparison for, for the numbers you're using. And then just a quick question, are, all, most of these events are taxable? Is there any that aren't taxable that, I don't have all my RCWs memorized as a former retailer about what's taxed and untaxed. Are all these taxable events?
You know, that's a question that comes up every once in a while. Whenever it comes up, I usually walk down the hall and talk to Carrie Knapp. And she's not here to answer that question right now.
Because that's just, that.
Oh, wait, Victoria's got there to, what was that?
All of them are taxable except for wood.
Except for wood? Middle of wood? Okay. All right. I, I was kind of thinking the opposite, but that would be the one that would be taxable. But, yeah. So just one thing to think about on the rates, although I think these are fine, is, you know, since most credit, most transactions are indeed credit cards, it's, it's probably fine. But, you know, you can, you can wicker the rates a little bit to maybe include a tax, to get the tax in there as well. We, we found that with fiber. I think that's making, making more sense to, to do that. But all looks good to me.
Sure.
Nice job, Bob.
Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
I definitely agree that I think we're doing a nice job at Washington Park and that our rates are reasonable. I, I do think that it's a little odd to do a rate comparison that doesn't include the proposed rates. And I think we could have done a better job there. I also wonder what the rates would be if we were targeting full recovery. If we were trying to not lose money on the Washington Park operation as a whole, how would the rates be different than what the proposal is? We're just trying to start with a little bit of method to the madness of rate setting. And if, if our goal is to recover the costs, what would the rates be at a hundred percent cost recovery?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I, I don't have an answer for that. I know they'd be higher than, than our proposed rate schedule here.
So from my perspective, if you know it made the utility non-resident camping rate forty dollars instead of thirty, I think that's too high, especially when you look at, at, at other parks. But maybe somewhere in the middle might be appropriate, especially if it got us to a hundred percent cost recovery. I also wondered if there is value in setting seasonal rates. You know, a height of summer rate should probably be higher than rates during the rest of the year. On the other hand, I don't want to make it too complicated or necessarily spend too much time on this, but that's just some, some thoughts that I had about how we, we ought to be setting rates generally. I think that in our unified fee schedule, there is a rule that says that all the rates go up by the CPI each year. Is that right? And, and if so, is that our plan to just increment them all by the CPI the way other rates do on the fee schedule?
If Mr. Hoagland is available, he would be the guy to answer that question, but that'd be our sentence, once we tie them to that, they'll go up by whatever the unified fee schedule does, Mr. Walters.
Mr. Hoagland.
Yeah, that's, that's right. So all of the rates that we have on the unified fee schedule currently are indexed in that manner, and that would be the intent to do that with these rates as well.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Ms. Walton.
Thank you. Mr. Voges, because of the campground being closed in May and June, obviously, we had reduced income. Might, could we predict if we were at normal capacity, would we have perhaps broken even or made money in 2020 at Washington Park?
Yeah, it would have been, in fact, Victoria was the one who had to make all those refund phone calls. How, how, what's your ballpark guess on how much money you had to give back to people?
I think that in May alone, I think I refunded like twelve grand or so, just as a ballpark, but.
Wait, did you say twelve grand? I'm sorry.
Yeah, twelve thousand, I'm sorry.
Just for May.
So I, I feel like we might be on the right track here with what we have for, for fees. And sorry, Victoria, I didn't mean to cut you off if you have more to say.
I don't know, it's just, I remember specifically about twelve thousand, because I was looking at how much refunds we were doing. And it was, obviously, the refunds refer across the summertime, and people were just canceling at that rate. But altogether, it was about twelve grand, twelve thousand for the month of May alone. So I would venture the guess that it would be close to recovery, recovering a hundred percent, if not ma- making a little in 2020.
Victoria, I'm sorry, Bob, but Victoria, weren't we down about fifteen percent for the year?
Yeah.
That's what, Ms. Walton, so that's what we figured due to COVID, we're down about fifteen percent for the year, because we were at that time that Victoria's talking about, we were giving full refunds, where normally we keep five and ten dollars as a cancellation fee. So because of COVID, we were cutting, like, we didn't charge the Canadians that, because they couldn't cross the border. And so we were just trying to be as understanding as we could. We gave people a deadline. I can't remember if that was mid-June or early July, and then we started charging them the fee. So we tried to be graceful, because it was a pandemic we were all getting used to. But I think you're right, if we, if we make these increases, it's our expectation that we'll have, you know, the activity we've seen, not only in our park campground, but in the other counties around us, it was a record year of use. And so we think that we'll see people, because it's one of the few things they can do, we don't expect that to go away during 2021.
And another interesting part of that, of course, John mentioned our, our Canadian customers, all of that 2020 revenue was no Canadian. And that's a, that's a big part of our customer base typically. So that was, that was a lot of new people coming and, and a lot of regulars who didn't come.
That's super helpful, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right, well, this team, you'll bring it back, and we'll continue on. Thank you. And if this time, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to item five C, which is Resolution 3016, the wastewater plant outfall competitive bidding waiver. This is discussion of possible action. Ms. Swetnam is here this evening with Mr. Buckamire.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, and Members of the audience. So tonight, you have before you Resolution 3016, which waives competitive bidding for the wastewater treatment plant outfall project on the basis of it being a pollution control facility. So I'm going to go through the basics of that resolution. But before I get too far down the path here, I just want to let you all know, I sent out an updated version shortly before council meeting started. I had a really good discussion today with Councilmember Walters, and I, I've made a few amendments to the resolution, which I don't think significantly changed the substance, but I'll step through all of those in just a few minutes. So I'm going to share my screen here so you can see the documents. Okay, can somebody give me a thumbs up that you can see the resolution? Great, perfect, thank you. So as I said, Resolution 3016 waives competitive bidding for the outfall project. So this background, I know you all know this, but for the audience members, procurement for public works projects have to go through a competitive bid, bid process, and that's under state law. But there are some exceptions allowed to the full competitive bidding requirement, and one of those comes from RCW 70A 210, that allows for municipalities or other agencies to waive that competitive bidding process for public works on pollution control facilities. Pollution control facilities are building structures, machinery, equipment, et cetera, that are used to abate control or prevent pollution. And I suppose the idea there is that, is that the legislature wanted to empower agencies to use whatever means made sense to them to deal with important issues of pollution control, without the need to go through a competitive bidding process. So we have used this exception in the past for outfall work project a couple of years ago. Council adopted a resolution waiving competitive bidding. And the Department of Ecology has indicated that the wastewater treatment plant, including the outfall, is in fact a pollution control facility. So this is, you know, right, right down the middle on this exemption, and so that's why we've drafted this resolution. So to give you some background on the project itself, and I believe Mr. Buckamire is on the, is on the line also, and he'll have more details about the specifics of the project. But the project overall includes four parts, and there's the, there's the construction of the outfall pipe underwater in Greenus Channel. There's the construction of the upwind outfall pipe that goes from the plant to the underwater portions of the pipe. There's the new combined sewer overflow pump station, which I think Council just led a contract last week to do the design work for that piece of it. And then there is decommissioning the existing wastewater effluent. So part of the reason why staff wanted the ability to have some flexibility in selecting a contractor is that, under the, under the procurement rules, all of these four parts is part of the same project. But these are four very different types of, of components. The, the in-water work to put the, the pipe underwater in the Greenus Channel will require a very different skill set than the, you know, construction of the overflow pump station, et cetera, et cetera. So the resolution allows the flexibility for public works to select the contractor, you know, based on, based on their, their qualifications to do the type of specialized work that they're looking for. So I want to call your attention here to the resolution itself. There are some places in red where it made some changes since the packet version. The RCW citations are just updates, because tho- those sections of the Revised Code of Washington have been recodified, so the numbers changed, but the substance did not. And then the only other substantive change that, that was made today, originally, there was some, some kind of vague language that said that the city will select contractor or contractors based on their ability to satisfy qualifications and meet the, the project budget. But it sounds like there, we, we were looking for a little bit more direction for public work staff on how they should select the contractors for these projects. So the new sentence there at the end of paragraph four says that the city will select the contractor for each phase of the project from at least contractors based on their qualifications and projected budget for the project. So that gives staff some guidance that when they're looking at a contractor, you know, they're not just, just calling, you know, one contractor to come in and do the work. They have to coordinate with at least two contractors, and they have to look at qualifications and budget. So, you know, it's, it's not the full competitive bid process that, you know, that would be in place if this resolution wasn't adopted, but it does give staff some guidance on making sure that the city's getting the best value for these, these significant contracts. So that's the information I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe Mr. Buckamire is happy to answer questions as well. If Council is happy with the changes that were made to the resolution, you could certainly pass them, make a motion tonight to approve the resolution as presented by the city attorney.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Ms. Walton.
I appreciate the change made to number four. I think that's a really good idea.
Is that, is that a motion, Ms. Walton?
I was, I was going to wait to see if anyone else had anything to say.
Okay. All right. Mayor Gere.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, my, my question is more, is probably for Mr. Buckamire. I mean, obviously, the, I just want to make sure that the big pro here, pros and cons, the big pro here is that we able to have more control over the selection, because you and your experts understand the, the project more than anyone else. The big con, of course, as we've seen, is, is, is cost. And certainly in outfall projects, we've seen costs, you know, go, we, we've had to revisit costs on outfall projects many times, very painfully on council. So please weigh in and, and tell me the pros massively outweigh the, the con of competitive bidding.
Yeah, the, and in this case, it does. So this is going to allow us to select a contractor based on their qualifications and on, and on cost. Just as a side note, I think we've shortlisted seven, no, ten. We've shortlisted ten marine contractors, so there's going to be a broad spectrum. It's, you know, there's never going to be one, and it'll certainly be more than that. But, yeah, we don't want, you don't want to have to select this marine contractor for sure based on a low price. There's just a lot of complicated work.
Yeah, I just don't know how to, no, I appreciate it. I think that's good, and I'm, I'm happy with the language. I'm happy with this. I, I just, just wanted to make sure you heard at least somebody on council say we, we don't want a repeat of what we've seen before in this area of having to come back and, here's another hundred thousand, here's another two hundred thousand, because it wasn't the right, it wasn't the right fit. So, no, I, yeah, I trust your team, and, and I think this is the right way forward.
Thanks.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to echo Mr. Miller and Mr. Walters and all of council, really. At the end of the day, I think the challenge that we may, we mentioned at one of our prior discussions, where sometimes in selecting a candidate without knowing the price, that created, in my opinion, a quagmire, even though that they may be eminently qualified, superbly capable of doing the job, it doesn't allow us the benefit of being able to compare apples to apples and then the prices associated with that. What I like about this is that it allows us to then compare several qualifying contractors and then make that determine, not just on price, but on capability. And so that's why I like the new wording, and I'm very supportive.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. Buckamire originally brought this to us in the Public Works Committee, and our feedback was, we do need to have a process for selecting a contractor. It doesn't necessarily need to be the full competitive bidding process, and we're supportive of the concept of waiving that, so long as if we end up with some better process, not just plucking a contractor out of the air. So this resolution here says that we would select from at least two, but I appreciate Mr. Buckamire's comments that we're going to be selecting from quite a few more than two. And we are going to be doing a process to pick the contractor, because the magnitude of the project, which I think has gone unstated here in this discussion, is, and Fred, weigh in, but I think it's in excess of ten million dollars, right?
Uh, yeah, it's close to be in excess of twenty million dollars, yeah.
So it matters.
Matters, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's why I got on the horn to Ms. Swetnam this afternoon, to try to get just a little bit more into the resolution, just to cover our bases here, because Public Works is going to go through a process, but it, it ought to be in our memorialization of our authorization as well. So I move that we approve this resolution, number 3016, as presented by the city of, city attorney on screen here.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young, to approve Resolution 3016 as presented by Ms. Swetnam. Are there any additional questions, comments? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Walton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Washington carries.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the hour this evening? All right, the meeting is adjourned. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Bye-bye.